...and that should be great anxiety and helping our students with anxiety. So June 7th, actually I'll back up, May 31st, we have the kindergarten through grade four STEM showcase and academic fair and June 7th, we have the grades five through eight STEM showcase and academic fair. And thank you, we have our last day of school on June 16th. So we'll have our move up day that day, that'll be the last day of school and the grade eight graduation and dance as well.
Okay, so I'll start us off with our sports and I'm gonna do some name dropping because some of our students have done very well. As you know, we began back on April 6th and our track and field teams have attended three meets since that time. And kudos to Coach Ramsey and Coach Stock because with one practice under their belts, the kids went off to their first meet at Wynnus Guam back on April 10th. Early season conditions, they didn't do any of the field events, but they were able to get some other running events in. Then on April 17th, they returned back to Wynnus Guam and some of our top finishers that day for the eighth grade, we had Suma Bilin was third in the hurdles, Michael Reagan-Bassie took second in the hundred meter, Sean Griffiths was first in the shot put and Damian Costigan placed first as well in the javelin. Also Julia Ahern was fourth place in the disc and first place in the high jump. Lydia Marinowski is a seventh grader, placed third in the long jump. And then we had some of our sixth and fifth graders do very well. Cole Ahern was second place in the discus, third place in the shot and Orion Brown was first place in the hundred meter and Owen Kahoon, another fifth grader, was second place in the long jump. They did travel back to Inner Lakes High School on April 19th. I did not have those results available to me though. And then we also have several of our athletes 11 so far which have already qualified for the state meet, which is on May 18th at Wynnus Guam High School. And those qualifiers include so far Suma Bilin, Karina Flynn, Lydia Marinowski, Gwen Merrifield, Julia Ahern, Michael Reagan-Bassie, Sean Griffiths, Hunter McLeod, Owen Kahoon, Jayden Zico and Damian Costigan. So pretty good for 11 athletes with only three meets so far already qualifying. So kudos to them. Baseball and softball teams have their first games next Tuesday, May 9th, and they'll start off by playing two five inning games at the Ashland Elementary School. Onto dances. I have all the fun stuff. So we hosted our SAU dance on Friday, April 14th. Those go from 6:30 to 9:00 PM and over the school year, the SAU dances are spread out amongst the SAU schools. We also hosted back on November 4th Sour Entertainment, it provides the music and we had approximately 125 students attending our last SAU dance. Students also have the opportunity to bring in some canned goods to donate and it takes off a discount off of their entry fee. And the last dance, we had 95 cans brought in and so many of our students take advantage of the opportunity to help themselves on their entry cost and also helping out the community. And our final dance that we'll be hosting, a PES dance, which is the May 12th Second Star Dance. And that is always a wonderful night to celebrate all the community work that our student council puts in, to give back to the First Star organization and just enjoy a night of dancing, food and fun. And would like to take this time to thank many of our PES faculty and staff members who have constantly chaperoned the dances this year and especially to Nancy Stock and Mark McGowan who do a lot of the organizing and planning for those dance events. Another special event prior to our April vacation, back on April 13th and 14th, our students had the opportunity to work with Sion Camara to experience African drumming and learn more about his culture. Sion has been referred to as a master drummer in his village in Guinea for over 40 years and he currently resides in Woodstock, Vermont and he teaches workshops all over the US, Japan and Canada. He was accompanied by Dave Kobrensky, Lev Belford and Grant Ellerbeck. All of them have also studied West African music and dance. They come to us through Alexis Einen, she is part of a group that they play in called Arabelleum and they are a West African rhythm ensemble and they perform all around New England as well. So both Alexis and Jake Stevens worked hard to coordinate their visit and gathered enough drums to accommodate 56 grade five students. And when they're all playing, it sounded like more than 56 of them. But many thanks to Holdenis and Rumney Elementary Schools, Ashland Elementary and Plymouth Regional High School for allowing us to borrow all those drums. So with the aid of all those adults, the grade five students learned to play two different rhythms and grades two and four were taught a few of the dances to coordinate with that fifth grade drumming. Sion and Dave also spent some time in the classroom, speaking with the fifth grade about culture and music in West Africa and kind of give them a picture of what a small rural village in Guinea looks like. And then on Friday, April 14th, the entire school was treated to their performance, both by the adults and the students. It came together really well and it was a great cultural treat for everyone. And many thanks again to Alexis Einen and Jake Stevens for bringing those folks to us and coordinating all the efforts to get them here. And then lastly, the safety committee will hold another meeting this coming Wednesday, May 3rd. And I lied in this line because I said the official report from the State Department is not coming yet, but guess what came in the mail? So we have that. I have not had the chance to thoroughly look through it just yet, but I'm excited to do so. They did give us just some minor things looking at our overall emergency management plan, you know, to kind of some suggestions to look at there. And we'll also be coming up hopefully next week with another bus evacuation date. We always do one in the fall and in the spring. And other than that, we're in good shape. We did discover, which is nice that we discovered it, over the vacation week, we had our alerts app on our phone go off and it was inadvertent that, you know, if the button got hit, but what we discovered through the process, part of that is always GPS, you can see where the alert is coming from and it told me it was coming from here at the school when in fact it wasn't. But what happened was back when we did a drill in March, a teacher had typed in her response as part of our drill, but never hit send. So then when her, when that button inadvertently was hit, it dated back to March 9th. And of course she was in the building when that happened, so that's why it went off. So a little glitch, but it's glad that we, you know, Alex Hutchington, the police department and the people of alerts were great and the response was, was great.
It was a great drill.
Everything happened as it should have.
It ended up to be a really, they were very serious.
It was intense.
Yeah, it was great, yeah.
Yeah, so little glitch in the system, but not, I mean, just in terms of how it was kind of dated, but other than that, everything went exactly as it should have and the response we got was exactly as it should have been.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
Julie, you want to do, or privilege of the floor, you want to do projected class sizes?
Sure, yes. I had also handed out the class size projections for 2017 to 18. So just scrolling right down, you know, Thursday and Friday, we have 26 families signed up for kindergarten connections. So that's basically where we're at. That, as we know from the past, is, it can be 30, it can be 26, it can be 37. So that's where kindergarten is at. Three, three first grades, we have 16, 16 and 15. We have three second grades, 14, 14 and 14. I'd like to suggest we continue with the three third grades of 12, 12, 12. And three fourth grades, 15, 15, 15. Three fifth grade, I have some of these too for the public. Fifth grade is 14, 14, 13. And then, okay, thanks, Lori. Sixth grade bumps up to 18, 19, 19, probably our biggest class at this point. Seventh grade is, as you can see, 13, 14, 13, but that's a group that we really have been working very closely with since they've been in second grade. And then the eighth grade, a big team of these.
We have figured out a way to pay for this. It would be two nominations tonight for those two positions that would fill the three sections of each of the grades. Financially, it's gonna be a tight squeeze as it always is in Plymouth, but we can do it. And then we still have the .6 music that's out there. And I would caution you that if we look at, if kindergarten goes from 13 and 13 up to whatever those numbers are, we would need that money for a third section of kindergarten. So the policy task in front of you is to say, you know, do we go with two sections of kindergarten at 13 and 13 here on May 1st and fill the music slot? Or do we, or do we just hold on the music slot for a moment and see where kindergarten goes? I mean, that's, that's where we are. I'm not kidding when I tell you, we've used all the money to get to three sections of each of the grades.
Can I ask, would it, would it be, recognizing there are three sections of sixth graders with more, with a higher enrollment than third graders, would it make sense to move forward with assigning the music position? And if need be, if the enrollment for kindergarten goes up, could you reallocate one of the third grade positions to kindergarten or would that not make sense?
You certainly could, but we'd like to make sure that the teachers know their assignments prior to leaving so that they prep for the summer. So throwing a curve ball like that at teachers is kind of a tough thing to do.
Kindergarten tends to, seems to explode in the summertime.
Historically.
Yeah. Yeah, we, it's like every year.
After last year, I'm just not gonna call it. Just living all these folks.
Is it really only kindergarten that has a high level of variability on enrollment at the beginning of the year?
No, it can go. This year was third grade.
It can go anywhere. Just honestly, we never expected what we got in this year's third grade.
It's been the nature of business, nature of the town, more coming in.
And the history of third grade was relatively stable, that's why we felt it was comfortable. You know, sometimes we get a lot of movement as kids going to middle school or kindergarten because people come to the community that we're not, we're not expecting. But, you know, last year was a real shock to all of us. So holding pat, there's some really great music folks out there, but holding pat allows you a little bit of space and then we can revisit music in another month or so. You know, we did music this year with the one FTE, it's a little different, but at the same time, it allows us to get three sections of each of the grades. So after non, and after non-public, I'll nominate the two, the two slots that make the threes all the way across the board. Thanks.
Privilege of the floor. Anyone care to speak this evening?
So just got a couple of questions. First of all, when we were showing the different assessments for ELA, math and science, you had smarter, you had local PBA, smarter balance and then pace. Is there any reason why we were using three different assessments for all the grades, for all the subjects instead of just going with one? Is one assessment more rigorous than another? Is there a reason why? Like why can't we just go with common core pace for all, all three sections?
I think that right now, we're looking at multiple measures for students. So for example, we'll continue with our NWEA testing that we do here at school. And the performance assessments, absolutely, I think will be a core of what we do, but I think it's healthy to do a whole bank of different types of assessments as opposed to just latching everything onto one particular assessment, like smarter balance as well.
Are they all, in terms of rigor, are they different or can you not compare?
Well, the, and I'm a little biased, that I think the pace are developed by our teachers and there's a lot of professional judgment of our teachers, especially as they use protocol, as opposed to kind of having something really external. I think the external is important and I think having it in grades three and four and then again in eighth, having an external kind of look at, you know, something that comes down into the school is important as, but I think for the other grades, the rigor of our performance assessment is really effective. So I think it does a lot, it holds us accountable on many levels, which I think is important.
So those will remain constant, so whatever grade three in math is gonna be whatever it is and it's gonna stay that way? With that, it's gonna constantly use that assessment?
Yeah.
The only reason I ask is because I, since the assessments are different for each subject and then different across the grades, I find it difficult to see how you can compare the assessment of the students from the one grade to the next, to the next, to the next and then across each subject. As opposed to if you were going with just smart balance for every grade, every, then you can see, okay, this cohort of students in grade one did this, grade two they did this and grade one, they were grade three, and you can monitor that progress. But if you go with three different assessments and each assessment and different in the subjects, how are you doing that comparison to see that growth or lack of growth or no growth?
Well, a lot of it is.
I think, I think we see it in the NIWA with the individual students. I think that we would pick that up. You raise an excellent point and that's comparatively year to year, you know, is there growth going on? But I think the NIWA shows that, shows that to us. And that's a more personalized test for each individual student on an annual day, bi-annual, twice a year. So I think we would, we would pick up any, any, if we were dips or gaps, we'd pick it up in the NIWA.
So the NIWA, is it every year?
Every, every fall, every spring.
Yeah.
For every grade?
Yeah.
For every grade?
Grades two through eight.
Yes, and that's the consistency that you're looking for, entering and then exiting.
And we get those results immediately, whereas a smarter balance, we get that, you know, four or five months later. And we do use the results for that as well.
Is there something, is there one method of assessment that's preferred nationwide over another? Or is it gonna be as varied as what we're doing here at PES?
I think, I think for simplistic charts, I think they like one measure nationwide, but I think in terms of real analytical ability of us to find out where our students are in terms of depth of knowledge and things, I think mixing it up as Julie proposed is a pretty good idea. I'd like to see that for a few years to see how we do. I think we're gonna be fine. I think it's, I think the smorgasbord that we're looking at, I think we're gonna get some very good results from.
I'm very intrigued about this pace thing.
Yeah.
Is that just for middle school enough?
It's, it's.
Or is it starting from kindergarten?
If you would start from, I mean, we're doing it K8. So, and it's really designing a performance task through what we call the quality performance assessment. And so all of our, you know, K8 and including our specials are practicing using those protocols and designing, you know, their projects that as the teachers have mentioned, have already been in place. So Alexis Einen, our teacher, would take a project that she's done and sit with the team and go through her process and see, is it, is it really universal? Like are all students really able to get the instructions that I'm giving? Is it really a depth of knowledge at the rate? And then go back, give the, give the assessment, get the student work and then go through another analysis process of seeing, does this match up? Does my expectation for my performance assessment match up? We're doing that throughout the school. I think we're looking closely at those testing years that the states all look at, grades three through eight as, as far as accountability.
Is some pamphlet or something gonna be available on that program?
Absolutely. And there's a website too and I'll make sure you get the whole thing for sure.
Anybody else today?
Just two good questions. Well, one's really quick. The last day of school, is that a half day or is that gonna be a full day?
It's actually a half day.
Half day, okay. So that's a full day of work for me. And then the other question goes, my last question, I promise, for this first part, goes to this, the class sizes? Currently with the grade threes, there's, because of two class sizes, one of the approaches that the school took was to have the RTIs and the levels. Is that something that's gonna continue even if there are three class sizes, or three, three classes per grade? Will there be that?
There will be time provided. It might not look the same as it does right now, but it will, we will definitely be doing that kind of RTI process.
And the same personnel, Kathleen was nominated, she'll be back next year.
Oh, okay.
Smith.
Oh, no.
Katie Kovansworth, oh, yeah, that's the, that's the Title 1A.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You can sit there and ask claims and payroll. You all have signed correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you got a letter from the RIDE, which is all yours. Correspondence from.
Blue shots for next year.
Correspondence from Faculty Association. And also you have a newsletter from the New Hampshire School Boards Association and that's updating you on some legislation. The one piece of legislation I would call your attention to is now titled Senate Bill 191. And that is kindergarten aid that's going through, it went through the Senate and now it went through the House. It wasn't included in the House, original House budget, but then there was no House budget by the time they got done. So it is now moving forward and went through the House Education Committee, would opt to pass amendment. The long and the short of it is, it's an opportunity for us to get more adequacy because we have full day kindergarten. And it'll be based on, there'll be a block of money allocated to communities, very similar to Plymouth, that have high levels of free and reduced lunch and also English as a second language. So I suspect that Plymouth will do pretty well in that pool. So it's, it's more adequacy money. So I'd call your attention to that. The other one I would call your attention to is Senate Bill 193. Yes, and that, that was retained in the House, which means it's dead for this year, but will be back next year.
I did speak to a couple of senators about that bill. I think I picked the wrong group to talk to because they were all poor. Well, it. Gave me a pretty good argument, but didn't do any good.
But it was bipartisanly sent off to a committee in the House.
Discussion items. Greenhouse project update and planning.
Last speech is happening at Plymouth Elementary School. This is among many. I do have a little typo on this stuff. Just ignore it. I do wanna read. Okay. And John is here, thank goodness, John Francis. So if we, if you have any questions, he's here to help answer some of those because I'm not as good at all of the construction pieces that go along with this. So Jen Weatherby and I met with John Francis, Jeff Downing from CCI, Karen Prince from R and Piper, Rob Reese from Reese Construction, Sarah Crane from Andrews Construction, Chris Reed, who was our greenhouse expert, and Jan Panagoulis. And we talked about the project overview and scope of work. We discussed the budget and current plans and we realized that we need to update the budget and the current plans based on the foundation needs that need to be in the design plan and the fact that some of the companies are able to help us out and give us some quotes. So John and Jeff will work on the update of the cost analysis of the project. Peter Stewart and Chris Reed will work together on the new foundation plan and the design. R and Piper and Andrews Construction wanna help and will work together to give us quotes, that's my typo, on the parts of the project they're able to do. And Reese has offered a lift to use during the construction of the greenhouse to reduce the cost of the greenhouse construction estimate. Jen is gonna be working on trying to find pavers. We have this vision and it was at Inner Lakes too, the pavers go up the middle of the greenhouse and then people can purchase those pavers for cost. We're trying to get the pavers donated, so anything that comes in from those pavers will be, go right back to the greenhouse. We continue our efforts to write grants. We're gonna work on grants this summer and try to get some.
We do have a Lowe's grant that's outstanding right now. We should find out in the middle of May if we have received any of that money. And like Sarah said, the pavers should be a pretty good fundraiser for us. Pavers range in sizes, families can buy smaller ones, companies, hopefully, local businesses will buy larger ones, so hopefully that will bring in a nice chunk of money for us.
Fundraising efforts continue. We're still at the 53, but we did just do a T-shirt fundraiser. This is the design that Noah Mockley did for us and now it's on a T-shirt and quite a few students.
It's our official Earth Day T-shirt for the school this year. Our Earth Day event was postponed because of weather. It was supposed to be the Friday before Earth Day. I believe we were looking at the 19th, but we sold these throughout the school to different, to students, faculty, so that they could wear them and show support for the greenhouse.
And then we also have our third annual walkathon to benefit the greenhouse on May 19th. We do it during that day and we bring in about $3,000 in pledges from the community for that walkathon, so it's pretty, pretty great. We did receive very exciting two anonymous donations of $10,000 each, with the two donations being subject to the school board approving the project to go forward with the remaining funding. So what our goal is, is to come to you next year during budget season and tell you where we're at in fundraising and what is needed to start the project. We're really looking to have the project done for the 2018 school year. So that is our plan for that. Yeah, and I guess that's, that's the update on the greenhouse plans. So you'll see, any, any questions for us or John or? The original quote was about 148, it'll probably stay about that price even with some of the kind donations that are happening because we realized in the discussion, we missed a few things and.
I think with all the little details from fencing to the wood for the raised beds inside and the, and the materials that will go in that, I mean, all those little details, we'll be around 150,000 when we're all said and done.
And I'd like to come to you and say we have about 100 by next year. Between or more. So hopefully we won't be asking for too much more than, than that. We're really gonna try hard with our fundraising efforts and grants to get that number as low as possible to make that happen.
I think the other thing that we'll do is we'll create in our material list, things that are affordable for people to go ahead and donate so that they're not looking at large cash donations, but maybe they could donate a two by six, pressure treated two by six, things like that. We'll have to break the project down tighter and tighter to get more involvement from the community. But I, I just wanna really commend these two. This is a huge community project to take on and they've, they've come really far. I think they'd like to be further than they are at this time, but like I remind them, it's a really large community project and I'm impressed with how far they've come and where we're sitting right now. I think we're gonna be sitting in a, in a good spot for you guys in the fall to show where we're at. I don't, I don't think the gap will be very, be very big at that point, so.
And then hopefully next summer, while it's, you know, being constructed, we'll work on curriculum that aligns with the next generation science standards and link it to the Wonders Program and things like that to make it easy for those classrooms to get outside and use it. Because that's the goal, get these kids outside, project-based learning. So. And thank you, John, for all your help too. You've been very patient. We're learning a lot.
Thank you.
So there's your Warren articles.
Yeah, look at Warren article links. Fiscal, your budget update.
Yeah, I passed around a copy of the appropriations. A very close call on appropriations and the word.
A very close call on appropriations and we're working with all of your grants to make sure that we're squeezing out every federal and state dollar that we have so that we break even. Revenues are tracking just a touch behind, but we knew that on tuition basis with the Warren kids staying in Warren now, that's, that's going a little slower and also full day kindergarten, you know, having, having public full day kindergarten. So, but we're struggling to break even, so there will not be a big unreserve fund balance like there was last year. So I'm just sort of bordering you to that fact and then we will break even, but there won't be a ton of money left over.
Any questions for Mark on the budget? Nominations in non-public?
Yes, for faculty, we'll do support staff next month and that's my issue. I didn't have an opportunity to work with the preschool people, so we will do that in June.
Okay. Another business.
Yes, you have a memo in front of you from Dan Rosner, who is our business administrator and works with the federal folks. And the long and the short of it is, it's what's called an equity equation and the federal government is making sure that we're not subsidizing everyone else's lunch on the back of the federal government, that the federal government is, is supporting, but not, not subsidizing what we should be doing. When you do the, you have a whole SAU in front of you. When you do the analysis, according to the federal government, we should be charging $2.50 for a lunch. Currently, we're charging $2.25 for a lunch. So you can see some of the districts are where they need to be, but Plymouth and the high school needed to move up. Plymouth, the high school did. And so the recommendation to you is we increase from $2.25 to $2.50 so that we comply with the equity equation so we continue to get free and reduced money from the federal government. So I just need a motion to, to move the lunch price to $2.50.
So, in favor? Privilege up the floor two. Any else care to speak tonight? Excellent, thank you. Thank you all for attending. Non-public session, advocate a motion to go into non-public session.